Good evening. It's six o'clock, November 28th, 2022. This is a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is if you join in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. And if you would rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader is absent. Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number five is correspondence. This evening, we have one piece of correspondence from Antonagan County looking for a motion to receive and place on file.
So moved, Griffith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Item number six is our first of two call to the publics. This is an opportunity for those in the room and those on Zoom to address the board with whatever issues on a priority for you. You'll have three minutes. I'll keep the time at about two minutes and 45 seconds. I will, as politely as I can do it, say you have 15 seconds. Then you'll hear after that, I have a timer set. You'll hear a beeping and that'll be your signal that your time is up. If you wish to address the board, you should fill out a card and hand it to the clerk. If you're on Zoom, we would ask you to use the Zoom raise your hand feature. We'll start in the room here first.
Mike Arons, Marion Township, followed by Mike Cunningham.
Thank you. My name is Mike Arons, 1365 North Alstott Drive, Howell, Michigan. I appreciate your consideration of my appointment to the Board of Public Works. I have been a resident of this county for 36 years now, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to have served on that board for the last 26 of those years. I'd just like to offer a little bit of brief perspective, if I may. During my time on the board, we've gone from managing a bunch of handful of small community septic systems to developing a number of major utility systems across the county on behalf of the various cities and townships in Livingston County under Michigan's Public Act 185. I believe we've been successful in this. I'm proud to have been part of it. These projects are typically backed by the full faith and credit of the county. And so me, as well as the other BPW members, take very seriously our duty to look out for the county's interest in that regard. We're also serious about our duty to the taxpayers, ratepayers, and customers of our systems, just as we're serious about the development and management of those systems. Our goal is to keep costs down while providing safe and reliable services. Like others on the BPW, I try to represent the county as a whole, not just any particular jurisdiction. Like the others, I am involved from the broad policy issues down to the technicalities. In municipal utilities, there are always problems and challenges, even mistakes. Nothing ever seems to go smoothly, we've found. So it's important to have a cooperative problem-solving attitude as well, plus some experience in municipal public works to back that up. The county is fortunate to have that in the BPW and especially to have it in the Drain Office as well. We're always seeking ways of improving how we do business, whether it's QBS or pre-qualification processes in procurement or proactive asset management, levering technology where we can, or improving policies, guidelines, and QA QC processes as well, improving mutual aid among local utilities, and especially supporting excellent staff. I've been involved in these and other initiatives, and I would just appreciate the opportunity to continue serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Cunningham, Tyrone Township, followed by David Peckins from Cohocta.
Hi, my name is Mike Cunningham. I'm the supervisor at Tyrone Township. Could you speak into the mic so then the people on Zoom could... Sure. Is that better? Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Cunningham. I'm the supervisor at Tyrone Township. I have served as township supervisor for 13 years. I'm also on the Advisory Committee for the Board of Public Works, and I'm seeking your support tonight to be appointed to the Board of Public Works. I've also been a user of the sanitary sewer system in Tyrone Township, so I have a lot of intimate knowledge about Board of Public Work functions and the sewer system as a whole. Many of you know me, some of you don't. When I got to Tyrone Township, one of the first meetings I had was right here in this office, and the discussion was, how are you going to pay your bond payment for the sewer system that the county has backed its good faith of credit in? And we put together a financial plan, and we were having a discussion of like, you can take over the township and manage it yourself, or you can let us take a shot at it. So we put together a plan, and in three years, we turned the finances around in that township, and we are extremely financially viable. So I am a ferocious budget manager, of great conservative. I have great knowledge of this system as a whole, and I appreciate your support tonight in being appointed to the Board of Public Works. Thank you.
David Peckins, Cohocta Township, followed by Randy Clausen.
Hello. I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to say thank you. I'm not here to ask for anything, but I've been your representative on the Board of Road Commission for a little over 20 years. And I did want to take the time to say thank you very much. It's been a great run. We've certainly seen a lot of changes in those 20 years. And roughly 40 years ago, I was on that side of the desk, just becoming a new county commissioner. So I've had this perspective of Livingston County for quite a few years. In fact, when I was on the board, there were only five of us up there. So now it takes nine of you to do what five of us used to manage. But I do want to tell you how much I've appreciated the chance to work on your behalf for the Livingston County Road Commission. We've seen a lot of changes in the last couple of years with an absolute icon in Mike Crane stepping down and finally retiring. And we have replaced him with Steve Wasilik, who is doing just a fantastic job. So I want to report to you that the state of the Road Commission, in my opinion, is in very good hands, and it will continue to be. But I do want to take this chance to say thank you once again.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Randy Clausen, Howell, followed by Dave Domas.
I'm Randy Clausen, and I live in Howell. And I'm here tonight for a couple reasons. I do want to thank you for your last Commissioner's Newsletter, because you raised up the issue of homelessness in Livingston County. And I appreciate your care and concern for the disadvantaged. I continue to work with my church on our church and society at the church, and we are working on some issues that need some justice and some work to be done. We're looking at the justice issue of racial equality, and we're looking at the justice issue of public transportation and at the justice issue of poverty. And so we're working through those issues. And I want to here tonight to talk or ask about the budget. I know you're going to be looking at the budget, and you were calling for public input on that, and that's what I'm here to do. And I think that I would hope that you might be able to find some more public transportation, particularly for seniors. I know I'm heading down that senior path myself, and we often need additional help by public transportation. And so I'm asking if you could take a look at that, because the demographics show that that's going to be a major concern in this county very soon. So a little bit of getting ready for that would be good. We do need more public transportation. 24% of the people in these households in this county cannot make ends meet. And if those 24% could have unassured transportation, then instead of paying for a car and insurance and all those kinds of things, gasoline, they could use their money for their children for medical and for education instead of having to support a car. And that is why added funds for public transportation is very important. So I don't see any reason why Livingston County, which has a reputation being one of the wealthiest counties in the state, doesn't have as good a public transportation as some of the other neighboring counties. So it's very important to us in our effort, our prayers and our efforts to have adequate public transportation, including weekends. So thank you for your consideration of that as you make your final changes on the budget.
Thank you for joining us.
Dave Domas, he didn't include this, but Tyrone Township.
Good evening. My name is Dave Domas, and I'm from Tyrone Township. I've been there since 1976, some of you will remember. Not the ladies in the audience.
David, if you could pick up the microphone and speak into that so that people on Zoom could hear you.
Sure. Do I have to go through that all again?
No, it's...
Okay. I'm here to speak on behalf of several of the people who are seeking reappointment to two of the major committees that operate here in Livingston County Government. The DPW Committee, Art Laughter, and as you heard earlier, Mike Arons, and also Dave Peckins, who has been on the... Okay, Dave, help me out. Road Commission, okay. Thank you. Dave has been on the Road Commission for a long time. When I first got here in county government, he was on the Road Commission. He was one of the leading members of that organization, helped to do great things for the county in terms of transportation and good roads. He certainly deserves to be reappointed to that position. As far as Art and Mike go, they are both outstanding talents when it comes to wastewater treatment, water treatment, solids handling. Those are very specific skills. Both of them are graduate engineers. I think both of them from Michigan State University. They are well experienced and have been in county government at one area or another for many, many years. The importance of the solid waste receiving station in Heartland Township, which both of these two gentlemen have played a very important role in. And I think most people probably don't understand why we even have a solids waste management station out there that takes septic and converts it into something that we can get rid of in a convenient fashion. Up until the time that solid waste or that sanitary waste station was developed, all of that material was spread on farmland. And when we decided as a group to pursue that course, and it eliminated that operation.
You have 15 seconds.
That operation out there in Heartland, there's no more depositing of septic on farmland. Now you'd say, well, what is the big deal about that? Well, because farmers plant on that farmland. And when... But nobody eats what they plant on there, because it's tainted. So it has to be...
Your time is up, Mr. Domas.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much.
I have no further cards.
With no further cards, we'll go to Zoom. I see one hand raised. Brian Jankier, if you state your... Restate your name and where you're located at, you'll have three minutes.
Brian Jankier, I'm currently at... City of Howell, at 350 West Caledonia. And I apologize for the casual nature here. As you can see, I lost the bet to get in there and testify in person. So what I wanted to say is, and I did send an email to all of you here recently. Chairman Nakagiri did reach out to me, which I sincerely appreciated today, and we had a good talk. And so, you know, I think, you know, our recommendations, you know, myself and my office, you know, would remain for the appointees. And I will second the assertion by Mr. Cunningham that he is ferocious. So, and would do a fight job as well. So nothing against Mike. Mike's a friend of mine. Sincerely appreciate everything he has done. But anyway, you know, we leave this up to you. Our recommendation has been from the beginning to reappoint our existing members and Pet Hole, since we really do believe having, you know, external... People external to the whole process reduces potential conflict of interest and that type of thing. But certainly, you know, we can't lose either way we go. So wanted to throw that in and appreciate all your diligence and your thoughtful approach to this. And, you know, we'll be fine either way. And again, thank you. Although, no thanks, I'll just restate my assertion that the sheriff pushed me down those stairs the other day. So I hope HR is there to hear this. So, no thanks to Mr. Murphy. But I am doing fine.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Kind of scan a little bit further down on Zoom here and see if there's any other hands, and I don't see any. So I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to public. Reminder to the audience that there's a second call to public later at the end of the meeting. And albeit that's for two minutes in duration. Item number seven on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes dated November 14th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes? Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. The minutes are approved. Item number eight, tabled items from previous meeting. We have one item that was tabled, it's 2022-11-166. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Drake. Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Drake, support by Commissioner Gross. Any discussion? All those in favor of removing from the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The... It has been removed from the table. Now I'm looking for a motion to open discussion on 2022-11-166. It's a resolution authorizing granting of an easement to consumers' energy. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Smith. Who is presenting on this? Kevin?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes. So last meeting, when this was, when I had done my resolution for this, there was a language change that was requested. This has gone through our legal team at Cole-Stoker and Toski. Also has gone through consumers. Both parties have agreed to the additional language that was proposed, which is on the exercise of easement portion of the proposed easement by consumers. Basically, the additional language states that if the property was to be abandoned or unused by consumers, that the county would have the ability to get a release of that easement if we thought that it wasn't being used correctly or utilized and that that should not be unreasonably withheld from consumers for releasing that. Any other questions? Happy to answer.
Questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Item number nine is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move Helserman.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. Item number 10 is reports. It's an opportunity for Commissioners to provide a report for their colleagues. Are there any reports this evening? Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For my colleagues, I had Administrator Bird pass out just before the meeting. I'll call it version 2.0 of the resolution implementing Livingston County's strategic use of American Rescue Plan Act funding. As my colleagues know, this came before the FAM Committee, and there were enough questions such that the version 1.0 didn't make it through. And since then, there's been a renewed request to provide input to the different projects, in particular, the projects related to external activities. And there's been some arm wrestling with the Broken Leg Drain Commissioner to wrestle away some money from his request and apply it to those external activities as well. And so this resolution draft reflects the ongoing discussion with Commissioners about their priorities that circle around, again, as I mentioned, mostly external projects, but also the Commissioners who have provided input on ideas for internal projects. Those have been duly reflected in this draft as well. So this current version, subject to, again, additional revision and input from Commissioners, will be presented to FAM Committee in December. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if the Chair would allow or anyone's interest.
Of course. Any... If there are any initial questions for Commissioner Zajak? Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question. Looking through this thing in the...
Excuse me, Commissioner Gross, we cannot hear you.
It resolved. First item, $8,300,000 should be allocated for use only to support senior centers in Livingston County, et cetera. And it says five active senior centers. Actually, there are six active, and there's one inactive, total of seven in the county. The six are Heartland, Howell, Brighton, Hamburg, Putnam, and Fallerville. And the current inactive one is in Gregory. So I'd like to make that noted.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioners Ajax? You're seeing none. Are there any more reports from Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll close out the reports, and we'll move to item number 11 on the agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a public hearing for the adoption of the 2023 Livingston County budget. Just there... After I call the hearing to order, there will be an opportunity for public comment. We'll provide three minutes for anybody wishing to comment specifically on the budget. After we've finished comments, we'll adjourn the public hearing. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order, and I need a motion to call it to order.
So moved.
Support Griffith.
Motion to call the public hearing to order by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. We... The hearing is called to order. Are there any public comments? I guess we just go by raise your hand and come up and it'll be kind of like call the public. I'll give you then a little... I'll say 2:45 or 15 seconds left, and when you have 15 seconds left. So is there anybody here wishing to comment specifically on the 2023 budget? Seeing none in the room, I'll go to Zoom. If you wish to comment on the 2023 budget, please indicate so by using the raise your hand function on Zoom. Seeing none, I would look to adjourn the public hearing. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so we adjourn.
Support Griffith.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The hearing is adjourned. Item number 12 on the agenda, resolutions for consideration. The first resolution is 2022-11-173. It's a resolution adopting the 2023 Livingston County operating budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Gross.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajak. Do we need any questions? Commissioners have questions? Commissioners Ajax?
I just want to point out, and I apologize for not catching this beforehand, but on Agenda Page 23 of 38, the table was updated to reflect the capital projects appropriations in the amount of 1.183 million. But the text just above that still says the 983, 983,000. I think the intention was for those to match, if I'm not mistaken, Cindy and Nathan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners Ajax. You're correct. The chart was updated, but the text wasn't. And so the 1.183 is the new amount for capital projects, and that be it for the resolve could be amended to match that amount if the board...
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend the be it for the resolve section just before the Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Fund 403 table, to be amended to reflect the 1.183 million.
You mean the text to be...
Yes, the text to be updated to reflect the 1.183 million.
Is there support? So, motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, same sign. The amendment passes. Any other discussion on the budget resolution? Seeing and hearing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax? And Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Next one is 2022-11-174. It's a resolution approving preparation and submission of a Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Michigan Spark grant application for recreational development... Grant Application for Recreational Development of Fillmore County Park. Is there a motion?
So move Helzerman. Or Smith?
Motion by Commissioner Helzerman, support by Commissioner Smith. This was reviewed in committee, but I'd asked my colleagues if they have further questions or comments that they would like to share. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Next up is 2022-11-175, it's a resolution authorizing U.S. Ecology to Provide Household Hazardous Waste Collection and Disposal Services. Is there a motion?
So move, Drick.
Support.
Helzerman.
Motion by Commissioner Drick, support by Commissioner Helzerman. This one was also talked about in committee, but there's an opportunity for Commissioners if they have follow-up questions. Looks like everybody's good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Next one is 2022-11-176. It's a resolution to approve the payment of a per diem for temporary employee election recount work. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Plank. This one was not presented in committee, so Clerk Hunley, are you gonna?
Yes, I, I can speak on this one. I want to thank the Commissioners for Commissioner Nakagiri and Commissioner Gross for permission to bring this forward. We did have a petition for recount filed with the Elections Office on November 18th. And under Michigan election law, it was, it was a recount for the Hartland Consolidated School Board member, where we did have a tie for that third seat on that particular school board. The County Board of Canvassers is responsible to conduct that recount. Our office will be employing the recount workers. Those recount workers will consist of local clerks, deputy clerks, as well as trained election inspectors who worked in the November general election. The county is responsible for fronting these expenses for the recount, and upon conclusion, we will be billing back the Hartland Consolidated Schools for those expenses. We, we are trying to do this as cost effective as possible, but we do have to pay the workers that will be spending either one or two days involved with this recount. Normally, I try to have my resolutions well prepared. I kind of based this one off of what we used in the December 2016 recount. I would request consideration of amending this to include for a budget amendment that will be necessary. At the current time, I don't have any funding in the budget for temporary election workers. So I would appreciate the funding to go along with this. I've always been open and transparent with the budget to the Commissioners that the Elections Division does not include funding for any recounts or recalls. So we, we are going to need a little budget amendment for this, so we would appreciate the funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Gross.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hunley, when we spoke this afternoon, you had not yet heard from the state. Have, have you received that communication?
No, the way that the procedure is going to work is, we, we are, the state does not authorize local recounts to start until the deadline for the state filing for recount lapses. The Board of State Canvassers did meet today and certify the election, so it will be as late as Thursday before we have authorization to formally go ahead and proceed. I don't anticipate any statewide local recounts. I mean, we can always be surprised, but we anticipate permission to proceed at some point in time on Thursday, and we hope to commence this coming Friday. And Saturday would be day number two. If, if for some reason we cannot do it then, then we will move it to the following Friday and Saturday. And, and what we do to keep the cost reasonable is we use the rooms out at the EMS building, and this is the only time that they have two, at least two of the center rooms available for our use. So we're, we're doing that in order to keep the cost as, as cost effective as possible.
Any other questions? Commissioner Drick.
Approximately how many temps are you going to need?
We're, we're looking to have around 40 temporary workers. We will have eight teams, eight recount teams, and they will consist of four members. In addition, we will have two backup teams there ready to go, and also to substitute in people for breaks and rest stops, but we are hoping, you know, so you're looking at about 40 recount workers.
And how much do you want? As the budget amendment?
You know, we normally don't put a dollar about in, it just authorizes the necessary, and I think if you just stick with, you know, if you approve the necessary budget amendment to effectuate the resolution, then we're covered. Because I don't know if it's going to be one day or two days, and if you notice, there's a per diem for five hours or less, and then there's a per diem for over five hours, so.
And I understood you to say some clerks will participate.
Yes.
How do you select the rest of 40?
You know, we asked, we sent out a request to our city and township clerks and asked them to provide names of their best chairs and co-chairs for their precincts. So they made recommendations to us.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Griffith?
Is it your desire to have a further resolve that Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes a budget amendment to effectuate the above? That was omitted earlier?
Yes, please.
So I would like to amend the resolution to include that language.
Motion to amend by Commissioner Griffith. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Helzerman seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. So we have a amended resolution, and I just commented because it has a budget amendment, it's going to require a roll call vote. So is there any discussion, further discussion on the on this now amended resolution? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Zajak?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helzerman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next resolution is 2022-11-177, it's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Community Mental Health Authority Board. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Is there, this was discussed in personnel, but are there any questions, follow-up comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. Next up is 2022-11-178, it's a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Veteran Services Committee. Is there a motion?
So move Helzerman.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Helzerman, support by Commissioner Zajak. This was discussed in personnel. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. The last resolution is 2022-11-179, it's a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Board of Public Works. Is there a motion?
So move Helzerman.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helzerman, support by Commissioner Zajak. Are there questions or comments from Commissioners?
I have questions. We have five people that are vying for three positions. I would suggest that we use our method of polling after we have our discussion, and each Commissioner give their three selections and then tally it up. If there's anybody that has five, whoever has five will get it. If, if we need to go to a second round, then we can deal with it then.
Are there any thoughts on that as the voting process? Well, then that's what we'll do. Oh, Commissioner Gross.
Is there anything that specifies how many people can be on that board? In other words, we have, we had three openings, now we have five candidates. Could we in fact approve all five candidates?
The statute says that, well, there's, well, the resolution is for three expiring terms, but the statute enables, so that would give us a total of seven on the board, that, that's currently on the board. The statute enables up to nine or as low as five. So I might defer if we have legal counsel. I don't see, if, if that was the will of the board to appoint all five, we would have a board of nine and you know, my reading of statute, it would be that that would be acceptable, but I certainly, if our counsel is with us, I'd ask the question.
Yes, before you do that, I would like to make sure that I understand procedurally if we need to amend the bylaws first. I think the bylaws specify the number of people on that board. If you're going to change it, which you may have the legal ability to do, I'd like to make sure we have that answered first before we appoint people to seats that do not currently exist.
So it sounds like it'd probably be prudent if we wanted to appoint all five to do three tonight and then investigate what, what Mr. Norfolk is saying, does that sound correct? Did I interpret that correctly, Mr. Norfolk?
Yes.
If, if that's so, I would suggest that we move to approve all. And then we take care of the bylaws. Whatever bylaws need to be, if that, if that's the will of the board, that all, because I, I don't think there's any question that all of these people are qualified for the job. And are, are we the ones that change the bylaws? Are we in charge of the bylaws or is the committee in charge of the bylaws? Do we know that?
So I'm, I pulled up a resolution from 2008 where it was the Board of Commissioners at the request of the BPW and Drain Commissioner. Sorry, give me just a second. At that time, changed from a nine-member permanent board to a seven-member board. And so the therefore be resolved section of this resolution says that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes that the Board of Public Works changed from a nine-permanent member board to a seven-permanent member board. And so I just wanted to give that, share that as some context. It appears in 2000, I don't know if this has happened since then, we're still a seven-member boards, this might have been the last time it happened. It does specify that it was the Board of Commissioners making that decision, and at least at that time, this resolution was the method to do that. So we can look into it further, I just wanted to share what I found.
Mr. Chair.
Available to speak to why they went from nine to seven. This, or somebody, Rob, Rob, maybe.
If you can come on up, Rob, and, and then everybody on Zoom can hear you.
I'm Robert Spalding, I'm the DPW Coordinator for the county. The resolution that Administrator Burt is speaking to came about in 2000 and third quarter of 2008. And what actually happened? We had nine members at that board, two board members, Martin Belser and Rolly, Ralioli from Hartland Township resigned from the board, and the 14 years is a long time for my memory, but I think what we, as a, the DPW just decided to go with seven people on the board instead of the nine people that we had. I prepared the resolution and the Board of Commissioners approved it. Like Mr. Nakagiri said, we can go from five to nine people. So if the flavor of the board is to, to go to nine people, we could, I could prepare a resolution to address that change, and then there would be two open seats to appoint.
Looks like our Drain Commissioner has his hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, you know, part of that, as I remember, is we had those people stepped down. I don't know that we had, they had much in the way of forthright interest in sitting on that board, and so the then-chair at that time, Jack LaBelle, asked about us submitting, you know, he said, the suggestion was, why don't we just make it seven and we should be fine? So I don't think that there was really anything necessarily or shedding why it should have been seven or anything else, just kind of the way everything was unfolding at the time.
Does Brian have an opinion on the matter?
Commissioner Helzerman had, is asking Drain Commissioner John here if he has an opinion regarding seven versus nine.
You know, a, a slight one, I would say this. The strength of our board is in its membership and having more and diverse points of view, and so I really have nothing. You know, we'll have to, we'll have to have a different seating arrangement, that's probably the only thing, but with nine, to me, it's, we, we have strength in our numbers, so it, it really matters in a way, so to me, seven is fine. Nine works equally, if not better than seven, in my opinion.
Any other comments? Commissioners Zajak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'm unaware of what the unforeseen consequences are. I know seating arrangements is one thing, but this seems like we're jumping into making a decision about a very important topic that we've been discussing in great detail. And I guess I'm not aware of all the ins and outs and ups and downs of, of what this decision would make, so I guess we would be relying on our DPW Coordinator and our Drain Commissioner to say, don't worry. Typically, we, we, we require a little more investigation than that, based on my experience. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned about jumping to make this decision tonight, for the first I've heard about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Plank?
Yeah, I, I, I have the same concerns as Commissioners Zajak. I, first of all, Brian's probably on medication right now. So I'm not sure if he's really, no, I'm just kidding. He picks on Sheriff Murphy all the time, so I figured he could take it. For me, I, I also think that the decision to move it from seven to nine should come from the DPW and the, the leadership of that group. And for me, my preference would be, let's just vote the way we were going to, and then at some point, they can introduce a resolution to increase that membership. If they feel it's, it warrants it, and then at that point, it opens two seats and then more people can apply. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Gross?
This is my second time around, I don't know if any other Commissioners have a.
Oh, actually, yeah, it is your second time. I would go for my first time. The I'm, this is the first I've heard of it. I'm favorable to the, to expanding it to nine. I have read the statutes thoroughly over the weekend and there's, there's nothing. I mean, it clearly states, you know, you could have five, seven, or nine. We have people that are desirous of serving, that have interests, you know, I put forward nominees based on criteria that I thought were important, but I understand there's other criteria too. And in fact, I want to share a little story. This is kind of maybe off on a tangent a little bit, but it still applies to this appointment. You know, when I put forward my nominees, there was, it called the public some opinions, strong opinions that didn't agree with what, with who I had put forward. And in those comments, I mean, for anybody that was there, they would know it was between the Drain Commissioner and I. I called the Drain Commissioner today after receiving a call from Mike Aaron's, one of the incumbents. And I want to share this story with people because it was very impactful to me and perhaps will be impactful to you. But Mr. Aaron's had left me a voicemail on Friday of, what was it? Anyway, it was before Thanksgiving, so it must not have been Friday. The explaining, answering a question that I had posed in the email. And at the end of his message, he apologized to saying that you know, he apologized for not meeting, you know, my expectations. You know, Mr. Aaron's could have ripped me a new one for saying, hey, you jerk, why didn't you reappoint me? He, that's what usually would happen in today's society. But Mr. Aaron's exhibited what I'm going to describe as Christian humility to, you know, so you have a situation and approach it from a humble standpoint. That was very impactful to me. And it, and I know Mr. Aaron's and, and I didn't have any ill will towards him, but I, you know, that was just such an impressive thing that he did that I feel I wanted to share. Anyway, that prompted me to try a little bit of that same humility and I reached out to the Drain Commissioner today. We had a great discussion. It was very worthwhile. I think it opens the door to more discussions. The, you know, my recollection of the discussion and the Drain Commissioner is here, he can correct me if I misspeak, was that he would prefer to have, you know, the two incumbents and Pat Hole. I said I would prefer to have Pat Hole, Mr. Mike Cunningham and Mr. Aaron's. And so the Drain Commissioner also indicated that, you know, he wasn't opposed to what I was putting forward. I view that as a compromise because we actually had one person that we, both the Drain Commissioner I agreed on, and that was Pat Hole, would be a great addition. I am strongly in favor of Mike Cunningham because he is the only, would be the only Tyrone Township voice on the board. And I just think it's important for representative government to have somebody from Tyrone. And then Mike, Brian Johnkier spoke strongly in favor of Mike Aaron. So we had somebody we agreed on, you know, both of us agreed on. And then a person that I'd rather have and the person that Brian rather have, I thought it was would be a compromise. And if people, anyway, that's how I'm looking at it as a compromise. But if we want to advance all of them, I think they all want to serve. I think that you know, the one person that I had, you know, put forward that wouldn't make it if it was just seven, a gentleman by the name of Jason Fowler, he would, is just a resident of Heartland Township that uses the sewers. He would be the only person on the Board of Public Works. It's actually a sewer, you know, a user of the service. And I think that provides an important perspective, you know, in terms of, you know, good governance. So I appreciate the, my colleagues bearing with me as I rambled a little bit. I thought it was an important story to share, but in the bottom line, I'd be supportive of pushing forward all of the candidates. Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to urge my colleagues strongly to consider doing what we need to do to get all five of these candidates. Since I've been on the county board, I've had dealings with Mr. Aaron's in the Open Spaces Committee representing Hamburg Township. I know Mr. Hole. I was very impressed with Mr. Cunningham's resume, his presentation tonight. And I like the idea of having Mr. Fowler as a resident, a user of the system on board. It's a different perspective perhaps. And Mr. McClure also has served us very well in the past. So I, I really think we can use all five of these to the benefit of the county and its residents, its citizens. And I would strongly urge my colleagues to go the route of whatever we need to do to change the bylaws to permit that board having nine members. Thank you.
Other. Yes.
I wanted to offer one of two options here for the board to consider. The first being tabling this resolution until we have probably our next meeting where we have an amendment. Procedurally, the amendment should come from the Board of Public Works. It's for your approval. But I'm concerned that if we appoint people and the amendment does not transpire, we may not be able to delineate which of the five are going to fill the three spaces. The other option would be to appoint all five contingent upon the amendment so that it's an all or nothing proposition. I just don't want to have a situation where we think something that is going to occur and should occur hasn't happened first when we're making an appointment for currently three open seats.
As somebody who is favorable to pushing, you know, the all five forward, I if there's the will on the board, it would, I would ask for an amendment. The one that sounded the best to me would be to, what Matt Norford said would be to make it contingent on contingent on what? The bylaws changing? Is that?
Yes, contingent upon an amendment to the bylaws to increase the number of representatives to nine.
Okay.
I would move to amend this resolution contingent upon requests from the Board of Public Works to increase the their membership from seven to nine, that we, with that consideration, that we approve all five people contingent upon that.
Is there support?
Support, Gross.
Is there discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? The amendment passes. So now we have an amended resolution. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Certainly.
A motion to amend. I'm not sure where you want that amendment in. You might want to consider that. But contingent upon amendment by the Board of Public Work bylaws to allow nine members.
That we're going to put forward all five, right?
I could include that if, if that is included, all five members.
All five candidates.
Candidates, okay. Yes.
You're referencing Board of Public Work bylaws and I'm not just that.
It's a, it's a resolution. There isn't, it isn't in the bylaws. It's in the, it's by a resolution, I think.
A recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not the bylaws?
We wouldn't be changing the bylaws.
Okay.
We would be doing a resolution recommending the county board.
So the bylaws don't say how many members.
No, the bylaws are the original, the original resolution from.
Excuse me, can you please go to the microphone so we can hear you on Zoom?
Okay, the original resolution from 1969 is what we would be referring to and making the change on that resolution. And, and on Thursday, we, the Board of Public Works could recommend approval of changing the members from seven to nine.
I have a comment on that. You know, if there are no bylaws that control, which it sounds like there are no bylaws, the approve, you know, doing what we're talking about doing, expanding the board to nine is solely a decision of the Board of Commissioners. It, I mean, the, the Board of Public Works is an agent of the county, is an agent, acts as our agent. It's Board of Commissioners' agent. I recall that distinctly from the statute. So I wouldn't advocate putting in the resolution that this requires the approval of the Board of Public Works. If there are bylaws that control, then yes. But if there are no bylaws that control, it is solely a decision of the Board of Commissioners.
But we would need a resolution to that effect. And we don't have a resolution of that effect unless we want to. It seems to me that we should have a separate resolution for that as opposed to having it part of this resolution.
Enlarge the board.
That would make more sense to me.
I think we have Drain Commissioner Johnkier.
Yeah, just to reaffirm what Commissioner Nakagiri stated, that the size of the board, which it could actually range from one where I'm the sole member and decision maker as part of the the Board of Public Works, which I would recommend you not doing. All the way up till to nine, I believe. And that's at the sole discretion of the County Board of Commissioners. So yeah, that's done. Now, we're certainly happy to run that through the Board of Public Works. And I can't tell you other, what the Board of Public Works' recommendation would be. I just know my feeling on it. I'm guessing they would be supportive of it. But we could certainly do that at our next board meeting if that's helpful for, for this body.
I would ask our legal counsel for what in legal counsel's opinion is the optimum wording of this amendment?
Sorry, I'm frantically trying to review the bylaws here. So you could be more general, contingent upon the necessary steps to implement the change from seven to nine. If you wanted to do that instead of referencing a specific document. My concern is that we missed something here by shooting from the hip that we at this point I have not vetted. So I would like it to be as general as possible. I have no objection to you approving this contingent upon that change being made. I just think the change needs to be articulated and performed in the same manner and process that we did it last time, which sounds like a resolution that came out of a recommendation from the Board of Public Works.
So if it was contingent on the necessary steps, it is, we already voted on the amendment, but I'd ask if you could make a.
That's, that's my intent, yes.
Is there objection to, any objection?
I'd just like to add, what happens if they come back and say, now, if we just want to keep it at seven, what happens next?
Well, legally, we would need to determine whether or not it is unilaterally your call, which I believe that it is or not. I just want to make, you know, this is the one issue with doing things from my perspective that we have not specifically examined. Is it's difficult for me to give you a firm up or down. So I'm trying to give you as much flexibility as possible to accomplish what you want to accomplish tonight.
Mr. Chair, would it be best that we table this, get the right steps in order? And then, then we can feel confident that we're, we're not shooting from the hip, as our lawyer says. I would, I would move that we table or postpone, whichever is the correct word, at least until our next board meeting. Because these have to be appointed by January 1. So I think we have time.
Yeah, you have two choices. You can motion to table or motion to postpone. If you motion to table and we get a second, we will cut off debate and have an immediate vote. So.
I know that there was a resolution of, there's a second on it.
Yes. No, 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 a motion to table supersedes that.
Yeah, table.
I'd second the motion to table.
All right.
It's too complicated.
The, there's a motion by Commissioner Helsner to table, support by Commissioner Reader. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Tabled to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Ping pong there.
Item number 13 on the agenda is accounts payable reports. So we're looking, I'm looking for a resolution to pay the claims dated November 29th, 28th, and the payables, November 5th to November 18th. Is there a motion?
So move Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. I remember 14 is our second and final call to the public. This is two minutes in duration. Is there anybody in the room? First, we'll start in the room. Does not look like it. How about on Zoom? Drain Commissioner Johnkier on Zoom.
Yeah, just a, thank you. My wife is laughing because I chose to respond. I'm not sure why that's, that's funny. But I just want to say thanks for your thoughtful deliberation in, in response to one of the requests or one of the statements. In response to a couple of statements, yes, Commissioner Plank, I am still on medication. So this is kind of rough. And then two, I don't think it really matters what the Board of Public Works says in terms of how many members it should be. Obviously, you know, getting an opinion from them, I think, is a good thing to do. And I'm not sure which way they'd go on. I assume that, that, you know, they would be fine with nine members and we'll certainly run that by them. But again, thank you. It sounds like you're on the right track. And one of these days, we'll actually have a resolution that you guys make simpler instead of more complicated. I'm going to work on that for future meetings.
And Brian, thanks for taking the time to chat this afternoon. I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate you reaching out. I really do.
With that being said, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move Helsner.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Zajak. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign, or adjourned.